Okay, with both meeting to order if you best stand and join me. Okay, the first order of business is to approve the minutes of our school board meeting for November 7th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it is been moved. You would like to adjourn? Seconded by Brody.
Well, I'll second, but I have a couple of minutes.
All right, good fair, Brody.
Um, the first thing is under public input, what Crystal Sawyer said. Um, she also, I think we should add that, she also requested to have students at Carroll Academy, who live in our district, participate in WRDS. That was part of what she mentioned in public, but I think that was their ultimate point.
Okay, that should be, yeah, should be a, thank you.
Um, and then my second suggestion was under the student representative report. I thought we should have her report attached to the minutes because that's what it says under the report, but they weren't attached to the minutes.
Okay.
That's all, so that was my suggestion.
That's good. Excuse me, yes, excuse me. Okay, so we moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 7th meeting with the changes noted. Um, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Abstain.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wozai as well, thank you. Okay, the second is to approve the minutes of academic affairs meeting on November 16th. Those present were Tom, Stephanie, and Charlene.
I just want to make, uh, in my recollection, uh, we did not recommend that policy ADB put tonight as a first read, but we recommended that it just be introduced to the board, um, but not as a first read. That was how my memory serves me, but.
Okay.
But Tom and Charlene.
Charlene, any comment on that?
Um, I, I'll defer to Stephanie on that. We were going through policies, uh, full collection policies, and if that is her recollection, um, is that your recollection as well, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, then, we will, we will say that is not for first read, we're just going to refer you to it.
Okay, so do we hear a motion from one of the three of you to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
A move by Charlene, seconded by Tom. Okay, those all in favor then, Stephanie?
Uh, yes.
Tom?
Aye.
And Charlene?
Aye. Um, if we could modify the agenda to move that from the first read on the agenda as well.
Yeah.
We're fine, thank you.
Will do. Okay, the next is the approval of the minutes, and we can do these all together if you want, because all three of us were there at the same, uh, all three meetings. Uh, the finance committee meetings on November 15th, 16th, and 17th. Uh, right here, a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Brody.
I just wanted to add something to the November 17th.
Okay.
Um, we had a pretty substantial discussion about the software and hardware in the architecture class.
Yeah. Yeah, we can add that, we can add that to it.
Just one quick comment.
Sure.
I should be listed as not present.
Not, not present.
I don't think so, correct.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we will add Jim Pittman as not, uh, not in attendance at these three meetings. Um, any other changes or additions? Okay, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Uh, Stephanie?
Yes.
And I will, yes, as well, thank you. Yeah, okay, Stephanie's seconded, okay. Okay, uh, and the last approval tonight is the manifests that are being signed. Uh, the manifest being signed tonight, accounts payable is $1,480,483.44. And the payroll manifest being signed tonight are $2,661,375.51, for a total of $4,141,858.95.
So moved.
Okay, moved to approve the manifest, Jim Pittman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Brody. Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wozai as well, okay, thank you. Um, okay, this is time for a public input. Um, 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting and 15 minutes at the end of the meeting. If anyone would like to address the board, uh, you can do so at this point. Uh, if not, we'll, we'll have 15 minutes at the end of the meeting as well. Anybody want to speak to me? Yes, ma'am.
Can I just talk to you right now, okay?
Sure, that's fine, yeah, just speak up.
Um, so I'm.
Your name, name it down.
Yep, I'm Nicole Duke, I'm the town administrator for New Durham. I addressed many of you last year. Uh, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the superintendent for working with our New Durham Town Council for the council this year, uh, upon some dates for the calendar for the school. Elections are important to us in our community of New Durham, and having a place to have those elections is also incredibly vital to us. Um, as some of you might be not aware, we do not have a location other than the schools to really be, especially during the season of October through May. Uh, so, working with the superintendent and also reaching out recently, again, the superintendent confirmed, um, we appreciate that we are going to be able to hopefully have a calendar, which I wasn't able to see, but the date specific that she mentioned were, uh, November 7th, 2023, February 13th, 2024, March 12th, 2024, um, to allow the voting in schools incorporating days off for students for those set dates. And I agree with the superintendent that we realize that these dates are just past the minutes and something to change, but I definitely appreciate the collaborative approach that was taken this year. It was a breath of fresh air to work collaboratively. I thank our town clerk for working with the superintendent, and I also want to thank the superintendent for that.
Thank you very much, and as soon as we have some final things for, for those who have changed calendar, or reflect that, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to approach the board because I have the voice of parents. And I really wish you all to hear what I've got to say.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Stephen. This will help.
Um, my name is Dr. Faisal. I'm a resident and volunteer in New Durham. I live 30 weeks row, if you need to have that over here on Smith. Um, and I am here to follow up on our town administrator's time and really bring the voice of seniors in this town. Um, and really request of you that you allow us to continue to vote at New Durham School. Um, our last local election, we had a fire station, and while our town employees did a wonderful job, from the fire department to the DCW to the town hall apartment, and the strangers of the checkers, they all worked very hard to make this work. I can tell you it was a hardship for seniors. There is no parking there, as there is here. They had to walk along rural roads that had no sidewalks, very often with the cane. Um, if there was any line at all, that line was outside because the fire station, which is the only other building that meets our legal requirement, just doesn't have the capacity for a line where a line can go out here at New Durham School. And I happen to also be a selectman in town, so I was there all day, and I can vouch for this statement. Many seniors could not see the bell at the end of the building. We came out of the hood with cubicles and had to wait another line to get into a cubicle. I have every lighting above it. So I am just sincerely requesting that you consider allowing us to continue to help at New Durham School until we have a facility, margin of allowance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the comments. Uh, anyone else that would like to speak now? Okay, well, there's more public input at the end of the meeting, uh, so we've got busy agendas, so we'll move right on.
First, I would like to invite our student representative. I had to add one thing on our agenda. Marcella Di Nido, I'd like to invite you to share your report tonight.
Thank you. Um, so I'm Marcella, and I'm the school board rep at Kingswood High School. So recently, uh, the current issue is James Foley class created an exhibit about Jim's life, his work, and the work of the James W. Foley Foundation, as well as the context of the Syrian refugee crisis. We opened this exhibit up to parents of students in the class and received many visitors. At the end of the exhibit, each parent had the opportunity to reflect on what the exhibit meant to them, their community, and the world as a whole. We are reopening our exhibit to KRSHS faculty and staff on Friday, December 16th. Mr. Myers' current issue class had an immigration lawyer come into their class and talk about her experiences. I asked someone in that class what the lawyer shared, and she said, "We talked about her experiences working in the immigration system, and she had to build up trust between her and the person she was trying to seek asylum." She got the whole story and pieced it together and wrote it up. She was very sweet and had a different view on immigration, but when she started working, and she became more understanding about it. The student council also put together 50 Thanksgiving baskets and made up of food, uh, from donated students and faculty in the high school. This was greatly appreciated by the surrounding community. The student council also put up the stars for the annual Wish Upon a Star gift donation. This is where, um, the gift that students in need would like is written on a piece of paper, and whoever would like to purchase the gift for that student simply takes a star and writes their name up on the signup sheet. There are no names on the stars, and after the first day, many stars have already been taken. Winter sports have also started, and the teens are excited to be back playing their respective sports. We had media night earlier this evening and received a good turnout. It was nice to see all the teams back together. And from the Lakes Region Technology Center, I also have what is happening there. So the LRTC held our Career Pathways Fair on November 30th after rescheduling the event due to the school weather delay on November 17th. The fair hosted 28 vendors that shared opportunities among industry trades, apprenticeships, medical professions, community colleges, and military with our students. It was mesmerizing to watch our students come through and connect with outside professionals in a way that we haven't seen in a few years. This month's career, My Career, My Future, featured Andrew South, our owner of 603 Motorworks and LRTC alumni of 2010. Marketing education. Students helped Molly the Trolley and Wolf Road Rotary Club unload Christmas trees for sale to help sponsor the club's local student scholarship programs. They also helped Winnie Paw and LRTC decorate trees for the festival of trees. In class, they have been working on company branding and did a project where they decorated turkeys in support of different organizations and their logos. For health science, most of students attended their fall rally leadership conference at the conference, at the Griponi Conference Center. Students listened to guest speaker, author, and CEO of Northeast Delta Dental speak on leadership, hard work, and being passionate about healthcare. They also attended short educational workshops. The Level 2 nurse assisting students also attended their orientation at Huggins Hospital. Huggins Hospital was added as a clinical site this year for our nurse assisting students. We are grateful and excited to provide direct patient care for residents in our community. Collagen technology. The students in class have been working on dent removal and repair. The program has also started an after-school club, Collagen Technology Club, formal. The intent of this after-school club is to provide potential and incoming students with familiarity of the technology center and the collision program. For agricultural science, students are in full swing making wreaths and centerpieces to sell to our community members to support their FFA, CTSO activities. The students prepared, participated, and the KRSHS Holiday Craft Fair, and were very successful with selling their crafts in support of the program. For precision manufacturing, the new plasma cam is up and running. The students worked hard creating napkin holders, fire pit snowmen, and signs to sell at the recently held KRSHS Holiday Craft Fair. Sales were high, and they even started taking special orders. There has been some real interest with Level 1 students wanting to learn how to use the HAA milling machine. Mr. Reserve has developed lesson plans focused on that. Students have also been finishing up their work on fabricating meat tenderizers as a way of learning, a way to learn the necessary skills to operate different machines in the shop. For automotive technology, both Level 1 and 2 students have been on the task, meaning their competencies. Mr. Sanborn students have started lessons on marine repairs because we live in the Lakes Region, and students have high interest in learning about marine technology. Students have also been working on diagnosis of brakes and fuel systems and making the necessary repairs. For careers in education, they continue to work in the classroom and with their direct student contact with Magic Moments, the Wolf Road Area Children's Center and Carver School students. Level 2 students have been researching and contacting different companies and educators on what educational career routes are available to them and how they can pay to support, uh, training they need to reach their career goals. For culinary arts, students are working on creating their own restaurant menus. They are challenged with making the shopping list, pricing everything out, and balancing portions per serving. Lots of math. This week, the Skylight Dining Room, they served soup and sandwich menu that was very intricate and popular with our fellow customers. Students are gearing up to prepare, cook, and cater at your holiday parties for our community partners. The GWRC bus drivers have planned to celebrate their holiday with us. For graphic design, FBLA worked closely with the National Honor Society and TSA to organize and host KRSHS Holiday Craft Fair. It has been a few years since the fair has taken place, but it was a huge success and went very well and was attended by the community. For multimedia, students have been producing their weekly night watch episodes and will be hosting a slew of productions in the KRSHS Kingswood Art Center. For theater and craft stage, students put on a wonderful performance of Monty Python's Spamalot. Mark Avery has worked on the Kingswood Theater Techno Crew for three different shows at Kingswood. Alongside his crew, he won All-Star Company Award for Technical Execution at the NHETG State Theater Festival in the spring, Mr. Avery. Spamalot marks his fourth production with this organization. We look forward to continuing our collaboration with Mr. Avery. For computer technology, uh, work-based learning, WVL, are an asset to the IT department, which provides the students with work experience in the field. We look forward to the coming new year with the start of our season, helping provide an overview of the programs offered through LRTC. We will be hosting a series of informational sessions about each program, cores, and core selections for the upcoming 2023-2024 school year. We wish everyone, um, every success in the coming year and look forward to a happy holiday season for GWRC.
Okay, thank you very much for that excellent and thorough report. Now, I would like to turn it over to New Durham principal, Colby Seavey, for her welcome and principal's report.
Awesome. Um, hey Isabel, do you want to get onto the music when you tell the chorus that we're ready for them? So tonight, we're going to have a little holiday, uh, peek at our chorus, who will be performing, um, one week from tonight at the Kingswood Art Center. I appreciate all these parents bringing their kids out. Uh, we had 25 students in chorus this year, not all 25 here tonight, but it is the biggest chorus that we've had in quite some time. So I'm going to fill you in a little bit because I haven't seen you since last spring, I think, when Caroline first came on board. So I'm going to just kind of tell you what's been going on in New Durham until the chorus is ready. Uh, we had a big number of students who came to have intervention in the summertime. Uh, we had, actually had more than we were supposed to have, and we ended up having to borrow kits from Tuffin Grove School. Uh, we had a super number of kits for our summer programs. We have enrollment right now of about 160 students, which is more than we have had in the entire time that I have been here. So we're very pleased about that. We got a new student just this week. Um, we have had traditional holiday celebrations. We were able to have our Halloween parade and parties. We had a Thanksgiving community dinner where we had over 200 guests have Thanksgiving dinner. Thank you for going to the party. We entertained, uh, the theater with Tiger from Plymouth State University in October. They sang and danced about kindness, and kids got a great kick out of that. Our PTL has returned in person with in-person meetings. Our president is Katie Hills. She's doing a fantastic, fantastic job. Teachers are excited right now because we have holiday bingo sponsored by the PTL, but people are miserable because no one's won yet. Uh, our volunteer coordinator, Diane Fair, has been recruiting people and working hard in the school. We had fire safety, bus safety. Uh, we use the wildcat way to, uh, try to modify our behavior. We try to work hard, play fair, be safe, and be kind. Students are recognized through conference. We have responsive classroom core values and best practices in our classrooms. We're using the toolbox, which all students have been exposed to. Our kids made thank you cards to veterans that we are sending on Honor Flight. We did the same thing last spring at Memorial, Memorial Day. They've raised food for our Weekend Back program. We have literary lunch happening where students get to sit and listen to a story during their lunchtime. Yearbook club, robotics club, newspaper club, chess club, puzzle and game club are all happening. I'm going to keep talking, Mrs. Johnson, until you're ready, okay? Come on, good job. The New Durham teachers have the greatest percentage of staff that is trained in the science of reading so far. We're pretty impressed with that, and lots of people have gone right into using their practices in their classrooms, and we're already seeing improvement. We have the responsive classroom coming in January with an observation tool that they call kaleidoscope, where they will spend a day here, and they will observe how we interact with kids. They'll be here before the kids even walk into the building. I know today is till after school. They'll meet with us after that and let us know what they think about what they saw, how we can improve, what were we missing. We have teachers who are in the math cohorts. Uh, the pandemic has definitely had an impact on our students, especially our youngest students, many of whom need, uh, reading or math intervention. We are working at the school to improve our multi-tiered systems of support. So it's pretty cool that Sarah Spilker is here tonight. We are working with Sarah very closely. Uh, we have, uh, about 35 students receiving reading intervention at the moment. We have about double that number receiving math intervention. Some of that is happening in classrooms, it's a small group. We are working hard to improve our approach to behavioral health and wellness. We are piloting, uh, we are one of the pilot schools for the system of care grant. We're working with Sarah. We have established a behavior team that meets weekly. We're using a Swiss database and the QuickBase database. The practices that we learned in the pyramid model and through the iSocial partnership that we talked about last time you were here, we are still using, even though our partnership with that team at the DOE has ended. We continue to use our play-based practices in K-1. Our students have weekly guidance classes in preschool through third grade. They have health class from 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. All teachers have a regulation station. We're big on movement breaks here. We use buddy teachers. We have the zones of regulation. Our efforts are working. Our SSC data for September and October were basically at the same rate. In November, we saw that cut and hat. Um, the one thing I do want to do in front of all of you is celebrate our staff. Uh, on November 18th, I think it was, I had so many people out that day. Uh, this one's husband was sick, or the child was sick, or whatever. I can't even remember what it was. But on that particular day, we were supposed to go and pick up our reeds for our holiday reef fundraiser, and the two people who were supposed to pick up the reeds were sick. And we had, I don't know, I don't even remember the whole thing. But I sent out this email to the staff in the morning saying, "Oh, boy, I don't know what we're going to do today." And I got so many responses from these people sitting over there. They were so helpful. One staff member volunteered her husband to go get the reeds, even though her husband had no idea. But these people work so hard. If you have a chance to walk around the building, you will see that this old girl, this girl is about as old as I am, and she looks really good. She has never looked as fit as she does now, I think. And that's because of the hard work of our custodial staff and our teachers who take really good care of this building. Um, they are amazing. They do anything that they, they have to do to help out. It is a team effort always, so I thank. Mrs. Johnson, it's all yours.
Thank you. Well, I want to welcome you all to New Durham for your annual, uh, meeting. It's glad, it's nice to have you all back here and traveling around the district again. It's great to see you. And I want to thank you all, Mrs. Seavey, um, and everyone else for being here and for inviting, uh, the chorus to be the academic share, if you will, uh, for the meeting tonight. Um, this is going to be a dry run for our concert, uh, which is a week from tonight at the Art Center. Um, with that said, we're still tweaking a few things, so, uh, we hope that you'll join us again in a week at the Art Center to hopefully hear the final product. But I am extremely proud, especially after a crash rehearsal here, uh, of where we're at at this point. And I'm excited for the last two rehearsals we have before the concert itself. So, without further ado, our, we're going to start with a partner song with, that is called "A Perfect Winter Day." Uh, you're going to find that some kids really like winter, uh, and some kids don't really appreciate it all that much. Um, and we'll see who kind of wins out as the S. Sorry. Sometimes we do all-star songs.
It was a showing, the wind was blowing. The snow was falling all around me. I was a slider, my feet were lighted. It was a perfect winter day. What a perfect day to build a snowman, build a snowman, build a snowman. What a perfect day to build a snowman, a perfect winter day. I don't particularly like the winter. I always sit ahead and hope. I think it's cold and wet and messy and sloppy. Just a perfect winter day. If you like that sort of day. I have a headache, my eyes itch, my nose is cold. Oh, I feel crummy on this perfect winter day. I don't particularly like the snow. I always sit ahead and hope. I think it's cold and wet and messy and sloppy. Just a perfect winter day. If you like that sort of day. What a perfect day to build a snowman, build my eyes itch, my nose is cold. If you like it, you're a snowman on this perfect winter day. I have a headache, my eyes itch, my nose is cold. What a perfect day to build a snowman on this perfect winter day.
Our next song we have for you is a beautiful ballad by Andy Beck that's called "Under Winter Moon." This has been a really great challenge for us, and we really turned a corner on it in the last week to week and a half, I guess since November, or since Thanksgiving. And we are very excited to perform this to you and continue to work on it for next week because it really is goosebump-worthy, as the kids have found with me, right? Yeah. Goosebumps are weekly, thank God. This one, some of it is music, some of it is trumpet. This is where we're still in progress here, one more week to go. This is Thursday's project. So, as fast as we can, this one's a fun one. It's from YouTube sensation Harry Griff, and it's a piece called "Raining Tacos." So if you like tacos, this piece is for you. Ready? Cheese, 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 cheese! It's raining tacos. Ooh, raining tacos. Ooh, raining tacos. Ooh. It's raining tacos, it's raining tacos. Ooh, raining tacos. Ooh, raining tacos. Ooh. It's raining tacos, it's raining tacos. Lincoln, can you introduce yourself before you leave? I don't know. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah.
No. Name everybody, or do you want us to do it?
Uh, no. I, 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 I.
All right, all right. Start here. Maybe you don't need the microphone, you're good.
Um, I am not.
That is... That is in fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
Um, Mackenzie is fourth grade.
Woohoo!
Somebody is fourth grade.
Brooke is fourth grade.
No, I'm fourth grade. She gets a B.
Okay, I'm sixth.
No, fifth.
Dylan is fifth grade.
Lincoln is fifth grade.
Joseph is fifth grade.
Parker is fifth grade.
River is fifth grade.
Um, I'm sixth grade.
Laura is sixth grade.
Anne is fifth grade.
Camille is fifth grade.
Anna is fifth grade.
Debbie is fourth grade.
I don't know that our chorus has ever sounded so good, so... They've been working really hard. That never did goosebumps over here. Ah, yeah. I told you! Equally am I for next week. Um, you know, I did wanna say thank you very much for, Mrs. Stevie, for roping me in. I said to my husband before I came down tonight, he said, have you ever been asked to do this? I said, 18 years? I don't think so. So I guess it was my turn. But I told the kids before we came on, they represent the return of the music program after we were decimated by COVID. So I'm honored to be able to present them to you tonight with that in mind as well because these guys, single-handedly, as they hit the regional, both middle school and high school, will be working to revive our music program. So for that, I'm very, very proud. Are we gonna have parents? Parents, I think what we'll do is I'll take them back to the classroom so they can get their coats. And then if you wanna head down toward my classroom, you can collect your kids. And thank you very much for getting them all down here, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Incredible presentation. So we'll transition at this point, we have another presentation, so they can get set up and the students can file up.
Thank you, parents.
Board members may want to... They're gonna present. So while they're getting set up, I'll do an introduction of the person who's going to introduce the person who's going to do the presentation. So, per request by the board, we have a presentation about our System of Care Grant and about multi-systems of support at Governor Wentworth Schools. Director of Special Education and Counseling, Kelly Mas, is here. And she's going to introduce a presenter. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the invitation to be here. Sarah and I are really excited about being here with you and sharing this information. Joined by Sarah Scooblin, our Systems of Care, our Student Wellness Coordinator, and she's put together a very informative presentation for you this evening to share with you information about our Systems of Care Grant and what we've been working on and the big picture.
Thank you. I was just saying to everyone, I'm not offended that you're all leaving, although I will not be as entertaining, I promise, as those wonderful kids. So, thank you so much, school board members and community, for having me back. I was in front of the board in February, really providing just an overview of our System of Care Grant and MTSSB in our district. As Kelly said, this will be kind of a broad strokes. It'll be an overarching picture of what's going on with our MTSSB work here in the district. So multi-tiered system of support for behavioral health and wellness. You'll hear me say MTSSB. We have acronyms all in education, right, Charlene? So first and foremost, I just wanted to do a brief recap. I know we have a couple of school board, new school board members and some members of the community that are here that maybe aren't as familiar with this process or this work. So first and foremost, our Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, which is the federal agency most commonly referred to as SAMSE, released funding to the New Hampshire Department of Education, who allocated funds to four school districts in New Hampshire. So Governor Wentworth was one of the recipients. We are in year three of our four-year grant cycle, so our funds are due to be used up by August 2024. Although we're in year three, this really is year two of implementation. I was hired on July 2021 and to oversee the project. So this really is our second year of the implementation work. We have some partners written directly into our grant, the Office of Social Emotional Wellness through the New Hampshire Department of Education. That's where MTSSB consultants come from. We have the Behavioral Health Improvement Institute, who are our evaluators out of Kings Bay College, and Northern Human Services, which is our community mental health center here in Stratford, excuse me, Carroll County. I live in Stratford County, so I've been a little confused. So our Governor Wentworth School District MTSSB implementation sites are Kingswood Regional High School, Ospey Central, Carpenter, Crescent Lake, and New Durham. These five schools have really committed to the process of evaluation of their tiered prevention practices here in the district. I just want to be very clear. Behavioral health and wellness practices and tiered prevention is happening in all of our schools. These five schools really have committed themselves to the evaluation process to inform practices within their own schools. So what is a multi-tiered system of supports for behavioral health and wellness? Really, it's a systematic approach. We really are trying to bring the right people to the table, mobilizing teams to collect and use data, to make an intentional plan, implement strategies, and monitor progress. So really pulling all of that information together and bringing it back to the teams that we're constantly reviewing processes and procedures within our district. The focus is on progress and not necessarily perfection. So while there are gold standards for MTSSB, really we're looking at how do we continue to improve upon our practices just as a whole. So this may look slightly familiar. I used a variation of this in February. This is really just some examples of tiered practices that we have here in the district. I really just wanted to accentuate the different tiers. So Tier One really is universal systems, practices that are accessible to all students. Tier Two are those targeted approaches, so really looking at students with some risk factors in a particular area. And Tier Three really is our intensive supports. So things that are student-specific, really targeted for specific high-risk population. So some of the things that we wanna consider when looking at our tiered prevention is maintaining school autonomy, while also so that practices can really be targeted towards the demographic, the need, the population, the capacity within the building, while also aligning practices to support our district student body as a whole. So a lot of, we consider a lot of these things as we're reviewing different prevention practices. So one of the things I was tasked with early on is the development of our district community leadership team, which really is our planning and implementation team for Governor Wentworth. So we meet monthly. We have representation from district and school-level professionals and staff and educators, as well as representation from various community agencies and our grant burners. So our team vision, really, we pull this vernacular, I guess, directly from System of Care and MTSSB language, so to develop a comprehensive system of social, emotional, and behavioral supports to promote student wellness and improve engagement and learning within the Governor Wentworth Regional School District. So really, we're trying to improve academic engagement through school-based teaching and really classroom readiness preparedness. So our goals and objectives, we are developing a mission and vision for the district around behavioral health practices. We want to assess current status of MTSSB systems in our tiered prevention model, collect and review district data, establish routines and procedures, continue evaluation modification to systems as needed, and to really develop action plans and set priority areas around behavioral health practices. So there's a lot of information on this slide. But really what I wanted to showcase was the priority areas at the top. So we used several different data points to determine possible district priority areas within our DCLT to really target our efforts. So these priority areas at the top are reassessed by... So these priority areas at the top are reassessed by the district team annually. But I did want to really show some of our future targets, because as we continue to develop our systems and really look at prevention across the board, we are actually improving upon all of these other future targets as well. So even though they weren't necessarily identified as priority areas, we are addressing them in some capacity. So I want to provide a Northern Human Services update. As I said earlier, they are our community mental health center here in Carroll County. We have 49 total Governor Wentworth Regional School District students being serviced by Northern, just generally speaking. As a result of our System of Care project and the behavioral health referral process that we established, 20 students have been referred to Northern Human Services. Now, I want to be very, I just want to acknowledge the sensitivity around this topic, and so that does not mean that of the 49, 20 are receiving services because of our behavioral health referral process. The 20 students that we have listed here, we've broken down the numbers into various categories, but I don't want anything to be identifiable. I want to maintain confidentiality. So what I can say is that of the 20, some have had an intake appointment and are currently receiving services. Some were actually referred to other agencies because it better fit the need for that particular student or family. Some are just pending review, so we're sweding additional information. Some of those were actually discharged or they became ineligible for, you know, for instance, moving out of district, and some are on the waitlist. So again, I didn't want to speak directly to those 20 students, but I did just want to update you on what those numbers actually mean. So one of the most exciting things, why I'm so happy to be here tonight, is that our memorandum of understanding was recently signed between Northern Human Services and Governor Wentworth Regional School District. So what that means is that we're at a place where we are able to look at and implement a co-located service model here in our buildings. I mentioned earlier how Northern Human Services was written into the grant as well. So we received, LEAs received, funding from the New Hampshire Department of Education. The community mental health centers in the counties they are assigned to also received funding through the Department of Health and Human Services. That money was allocated for a school liaison position in each of those community mental health centers. So our school liaison is Dave Poland through Northern Human Services, and he is now able, we are working on the logistics, I'll get to that in a minute, but he is now able to come in and provide direct services to our students, therapeutic services within our buildings, with the signing of this MOU. One of, it's very exciting because I feel like this is so needed, just everywhere, especially with COVID, but one of probably the, something that's super important, but maybe more so important than that direct service, is really having him in the building to support us at a systems level and really just help to build up our capacity. So that could be things like professional development, that could be consult, that could be co-treatment or facilitation of co-treatment, it could be, you know, just being a part of our team and structure. So I'm very excited about our MOU and really just, that can really pull down a lot of barriers for some families. So, and I want to acknowledge the fact that Northern Human Services is not exempt from staff shortages and for capacity and the need for clinicians in their doors. So the fact that we were even able to get this going is awesome.
Sarah, can I ask you a question? We have New Durham.
Sure.
So New Durham is in Stratford County, which you mentioned that you have, which is not in Northern Human Services' metropolitan area. So how do students who reside in Durham access mental health care outside of this MOU? Or does this MOU include community partners?
So, the MOU includes only Northern Human Services. However, because we have an MOU, that includes any school district students. So that would include New Durham students to cover, to receive services within school. So I just wanted to provide kind of a broad picture of what it is that I do every day. So one of the things that I've just been so fortunate to have is really just the capacity, the time. I have a lot of energy around this topic and behavioral health practices. So really being able to look at just district behavioral health practices in that zoomed-out bird's eye lens. I've been able to work with school and district teams on MTSSB priority areas just through internal coaching. I've been collaborating with Northern's school liaison, as well as many other people within Northern, to coordinate the student referral process and just really build up and collaborate with them, build up that relationship. I work with so many grant partners, other LEAs. We've worked so much through our cohort systems, through communities of practice, that we have all, that we're all affiliated with, to really share, leveraging resources, sharing resources, community partners and agencies, working with Carroll County Coalition, I'm a part of Ospey Round Tables. I've just really, I've been knocking on a lot of doors, emailing a lot of people, just trying to get our name out there, really try and get resources in, and also to have a place to refer students out. So so much of my time has really been spent just kind of boots to the ground. I've also been supporting the behavioral health data collection, just the dissemination of that information at school-level and district-level teams, trying to support district alignment as much as possible and as much as it's appropriate to do so, and then really managing and allocating System of Care Grant funds and just the project as a whole. So I want to be sensitive to time. I'm happy to get, I mean, answer any clarifying questions. I'm also happy if there's any particular topic that you want me to kind of deep dive into in terms of our System of Care project, I'm happy to come back and present out. I love giving updates because I love this stuff. But if there's anything that you want me to kind of answer or report out right now, if I can't answer you now, I will certainly find the answer and come back. I don't know, this is probably just for school board members. I'm all thrown out because you guys moved. I don't know if I'm going to be able to ask questions to you, but...
From your perspective, what do you feel like are great strengths and are great needs in time?
That is way too loaded of a question, Stephanie. I would need, I would need a lot of preparation for that, I think, actually. I do, you know, one of the things I love about the district is just the ability to really put teams together and use teams to make decisions. I don't know, I can't, no situation comes to mind where one person has really been the person to make a decision on behalf of everyone. It really does, it's very collaborative. I find that there's so much energy, especially, well, I can't even say especially at the school level, but all of our employees here are so, I believe they really believe in behavioral health and wellness practices. So, yeah, I mean, I could go on, but I won't.
In terms of a need, what could you, maybe the better way to answer that question would be, what do you need from us as a group?
That's a good question. I think just having the support, I think having, you know, the opportunity to present out what it is that we're doing. I think, you know, eventually grant funding will run out, and I don't want to be bleak, but there are always other opportunities for funding, I think, but just really being able to support this kind of work in the district beyond the grant terms. So I think that's just one thing that comes to mind. Yes, Bernie?
I know the YRBS, the Risk Behavior Survey, is kind of an imperfect instrument measuring students' mental health and other risky behavior, but at least results we got from our school district from last year's survey was that 38% of our students consider themselves extremely or, you know, very depressed or anxious. And so I'm wondering if that falls within scope of what your grant funding allows and how we're going to tackle that problem? That's a major issue.
I think, yeah. I think we don't, we can't really predict what's going to happen with long-term effects following COVID. I think what we need to do as a district is really approach it as it comes and really tackle it as it comes. It certainly falls within MTSSB, and I'd love to probably deep dive that a little further. I have not seen the most recent results yet of the YRBS, although it is one data point that we have used with, in reviewing at the district team. So I'd love to look into that further and really figure out how we can address that if we're not already.
Yeah.
I have not seen the draft form, no.
That seems like a problem. What's the preliminary result? Do we want to define ourselves?
Yeah, there's a, this one, I don't know, the whole process where they sort of do it.
But if they're publicly accessible, weren't they put on the website? It says publicly accessible data.
The preliminary? We have not put the preliminary on the website.
I guess my other question is, how are we identifying those kinds of mental health issues? If we know that, you know, at least preliminary, about 38% of our students are having that mental health issue, how do we have staff and counselors, are they able to identify that? I know that there's a shortage of social workers and of, you know, psychologists or counselors in the state. There's a big backlog for youth services, but is there a way that we're at least identifying and knowing we can get people queued up so they can get those services?
Well, I think that's the hope of the MOU, really, to get, to start bringing those services in our doors. I'm hoping that the collaboration with Northern through the initial school liaison position, bringing him in, Dave Poland specifically, is who are the liaison at this point, will really open the door to provide other clinicians an opportunity to come in and also tackle those kinds of issues internally.
But what's the reality of that? I mean, I've been making research, it's very strange for resources on a daily level. So you're telling me since you're talking to him, how often would he be here? And one school, one day a month, one, you know, let's, you know, you're saying coming, but give me one day a week, five days a week. I mean, it could, it could be three months from now.
Right. So that, a lot of the logistics are being worked out right now. Again, that depends on the teaming structure. We really go through what's the data, what are our behavioral health referrals indicate, and where are the needs? The reality is, we have a very large geographical region, and so being able to make sure that we are, you know, leveraging those resources, we're putting him where it makes sense to put him, based on the data that we've currently, that we've been collecting through our behavioral health referral process. So I wish I had an answer for you at this point. I do think it's a little, we're getting there. I mean, even just having the MOU signed is, you know, far away. You know, we've made great gains with that. So I think while we're working through all of those logistics, I mean, I'd be happy to come back once we really establish that plan and present out kind of how and why those decisions were made. I know that's not like a great answer, but...
Can I just bounce off what you told me to say, which is, do you have a need for services in a geographical, a V R district, do you think?
That's our, I think.
V R just, so do we offer, it's part of that, and we do, within schools, and if not, can it be, and do we need a policy for that? I guess that was three questions, kind of to different audiences, but...
I might, I might, one piece, I think that's, you know, an option, but I think what I'm hearing is that there are staff shortages regardless. So if there were more counselors to be co-located, they could come in person, however, they're not even necessarily available in the tower health care. Am I hearing that correctly?
And I mean, this is, this is not unique. I don't think I have to say this. This is not unique to our district, this is not unique to our community. I mean, this is, it's a critical shortage. So, you know, we are doing everything, I think, that is within our power to address the need of the students in our district, but there is no perfect solution at this point. And I think within this role, one of the things that I've been really fortunate to see is really see things at a student level and then really pull that and see things through the community lens with so, with working so closely with community agencies and partners. So, again, I don't have a perfect answer for you. I wish I did, but I think we just continue to address the need as best we can.
And Sarah, I think it's important to highlight that, you know, to throw each question in regards to how do we take a look at this, is kind of going back to the multi-tiered system of supports. So there are things within our sphere of influence that we can look at, and then there are things outside that we don't have control over. And so I think that Sarah and the teams, the MOU for the co-located services, that's just one component, but we're really looking at, Sarah's working with the teams, the school-based teams, looking at data, really looking at the tiered and the multi-tiered systems of supports to look at building the capacity so we can problem-solve internally.
Do our high school guidance counselors provide a mental health counselor?
We have a social worker, we have four and a half, I think we have a half, we have a halftime now, school counselor. Are you talking in terms of like mental health, like therapeutic services? So that would be, I can't speak to that specifically. I don't believe they'd be offering therapeutic counseling services.
So you might, you might share the difference between school counselor and a co-located counselor, that kind of therapy versus school counselor, what my, school counselor, tier ones, the school counselor would put into this tier.
Right. So, so school counselors support all kids within the tier one and tier two realm. It's not to say they can't provide a tier three service, however, co-located services are really our clinicians, and our school counselors do not, to my knowledge, do not have clinical, a clinical background. That would be the difference between a co-located service model with the Northern Human Services would be a clinical provider. So advanced level of training.
So some of our guidance counselors have...
But based on their licensure, though, they could provide.
Yes, that's my...
That's right, they could.
Yeah.
Well, he said though, guidance counselors.
Yeah, that'd be different.
But some of our guidance counselors are licensed, independent social workers.
We have two correct.
Yeah, and they're based on their license there.
I have one last question. Is some of the grant and some of the programs that you've created, does that involve the ripple journals in the middle school or no?
So I know last year ripple journals were purchased with System of Care Grant funds. Ripple journals, I believe, are a part of the New Hampshire DOE initiative as well. So while yes, that would, that would be a tier one support, so anything really that's behavioral health and wellness related would fall somewhere in this MTSSB framework. So in terms of funding, the funding of the ripple journals did come from System of Care funds last year. I believe they used school-level, school funds this year to purchase the ripple journals.
So we use, the original purchase was through the grants, the purchase of journals this year, but you guys don't have to follow them and how, I guess our staff are trained to implement this?
I'm not directly, I'm not directly related to the ripple journals right now, but mostly because they're not an implementation site, so I've been working closely with implementation sites, but all of our other schools are also providing tier prevention services, and they all would fall under this realm, this prevention framework.
I don't know, does everyone know what the ripple journals are? Their journals have the kids write and about their kind of like their feelings and everything, and I just had some complaints from parents, completely unrelated, but some complaints from parents that felt as if it wasn't a constructive part of the day because their students weren't taking it seriously, that at a middle school level, it's a lot harder for them to like, you know, to want, the journals want to solve mental health problems in their own personal journals. So, I don't know, I know there's a complaint that some students have brought up to me actually, and shared to you through that I don't know, that they, and I was like, well, you know, that's what you talk about with your parents and everything else, but they just, it felt as if it was constructive. I'm wondering how we can make that more constructive for them, because obviously, it seems like a very smart idea, kind of, as a conception, but implementation, I'm unsure if our students are getting as much out of it as they should be.
Yeah, so to my knowledge, the ripple journals would fall under the social-emotional curriculum. And I think that's certainly something we could look at, yeah, at the middle school specifically.
I don't know, or maybe not much, I don't know. One question, so is this maybe a question for all, but is what's currently able to speak to our SAS or is having to speak to the data entry? Speak to our SAS, I don't know if that means power school.
It's not, no.
Oh, oh, hi, no, no, we don't really use power school that way, though. So, I will say, since you have asked me a question, since I have a chance, I will say that I think parents who are really invested in getting their...
parents who are really invested in getting their child help, who are, you know, persevering, we are seeing some finding ways in therapist's office. We also have some groups, Instruct County Ideas or I don't even know, Fast Forward Youth Villages, I think is another name. We have a couple of organizations that are helping some of our more challenged kids. And our counselor is doing what he can in terms of a tier three intervention with our, you know, heavy hitters. He sees possibly up to five kids individually during courses a week. So I feel like we're, you know, we're doing what we can, given the limitations of this current period, so.
When I think about the tier prevention model, I really, you know, so much of our efforts and energy really should be focused on that tier one, that universal. We really want to slow kids from bubbling up, right? So I always use the analogy of a river, so why are we at a tier three level pulling kids out of the river instead of swimming upstream and figuring out why they're falling in to begin with? So I think for us, really, we want to focus a lot of efforts, which really ends up being about eighty percent of our population at the tier one level, fifteen at tier two, and really five percent at our tier three. So how can we really, again, leverage resources that we're supporting tier one as much as possible, and then perhaps slowing the roll up to tier two and tier three need? So I think when we really think about MTSSB, we want to primarily focus as much of our energy and attention at tier one, while also supporting the tier two and tier three need. I've taken way too much time.
Really poor issue.
I agree, I know, I would stay here all night.
Any other questions for Sarah?
And again, I can always come back. I'm happy to come back with updates. Again, if there's anything specific that you would like me to dive deeper into, certainly let me know, I can, you know, I can come back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you to Kelly and Sarah for that. Excellent presentation, much needed, your wealth of information. So the next two items on the agenda, under superintendent's report, are to bring to your attention. The first, we celebrated American Education Week appreciation, and in your packet is the letter from Heather Cummings and myself to all staff. We also give them a small gift of appreciation for the children. So we'd like to publicly thank and express so much gratitude to all of our teachers and staff. Next, bringing a field trip, overnight trip, to your attention, that I approved for New Durham School for the grade six to go to the Ecology School in Sacomaen, an overnight trip in May. Moving right along, next item on the agenda is our draft school calendar proposal for 2023, 2024. So I can point out a couple items on here of interest. We added two early release dates for professional development on October eighteenth and April third. We also are proposing to have parent conferences on November seventh during school voting, and a half day on the eighth. We're proposing February, it was the thirteenth, but we heard in the news, it was changed to the sixth. So that would be a day for no school for teachers or staff. That was February sixth. For the primaries, and that just changed due to recent events in the news. These are all, those three are subject to change. Brody, you can keep us posted.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask how you knew that the local election would be on the twelfth at this point, because the secondary state doesn't announce.
Purely guesstimation on my part, based on past years.
That makes sense.
So, being the second Tuesday, so that's how we, how I estimated by March twelfth. And that would be a full professional development day for staff, no school for students. And I think those are all of the items of note in this. In this draft proposal for you tonight. So we'd be looking for a vote.
Yeah, as always, there's, in this conversation about, you know, any particular date on the calendar, if there's any changes that somebody wants to make, take a look at them. I think this is pretty, pretty much a basic calendar that we put together year after year. So, you know, we start on Tuesday the fifth, the day after Labor Day, and the last day of school is noted is June eighteenth, tentative graduation on the fourteenth. So, you know, I think the calendar the way it's presented right now makes sense. And obviously, if we have changes in the voting days, we'll have to modify the calendar. But we look for a motion to accept the draft calendar as proposed right now, and then we'll change as necessary if need be.
Make the motion.
Okay, we move, Brody, to accept the calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll conduct the gym. Any question, yes?
Just sort of a minor formatting question. At the end of June, twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, should we eliminate those so people are not confused that they might be makeup days?
Yeah, we can take those right off the calendar, thank you, Jim.
Can I ask you, so I heard some feedback from teachers that it was that week of November where we're off for voting and then off for Veterans Day, and then there's a half day, was poorly, very, very poorly attended, I see you nodding over there. So I'm wondering if we as a board can move that half day on the eighth to another day? Even the week before, the week after, I realize we'd be splitting parent-teacher conferences a little bit, but I'm open to your thoughts, but I know that attendance was kind of struggled that particular week because it was so chopped up.
Could we do it the week before on the first?
So we looked at a few options, but knowing or guesstimating that elections would be on the seventh, we want to hold parent conferences that day, when, you know, for that full day. And then as far as the early release, it's helpful for teachers to have that, you know, next to each other, albeit a very choppy week, admittedly. Per the contract, it does need to be a day and a half during school hours.
Right, no, I'm not suggesting making it out of school hours, even though that would be great for me as a parent, who works. It was very, Mrs. Beaverstock was not pleased at how many times I had to reschedule because it was hard to make that happen. But I'm just wondering if we can move it outside of that week because it's, and I don't know, like, do you want to chime in? Just from an attendance perspective, if that wasn't struggling, do you see this as?
I think the kind of work itself is just a chopping block, because we have Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, so I don't know that there's a whole lot that can be done. Are you, so you're saying you would have the seventh, and then a half a day on the eighth? Is that your place?
So what's currently proposed is the seventh is parent-teacher conferences, and the eighth is a half day and parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon, and then the ninth is the full day, and the attendance is no school. So the students only have two and a half days of school that, that kind of very broken up.
I have a, that's a great suggestion.
Go ahead, Brody.
It might not be too popular, but it is an option, that we send students to school on Veterans Day and move that day off to somewhere else. The only is the requirement that we have to teach them about Veterans Day, they can school on Veterans Day.
What I just asked, the question is, is the, because Veterans Day is on a Saturday, is it required to have Friday as a, to observe Veterans Day?
I don't think our, New Hampshire RSA allows that, even though technically Friday is the public holiday. The actual date is November eleventh, and, Brody, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's a New Hampshire RSA that requires Veterans Day be observed on November eleventh.
Yeah, that, that was my question, whether, whether we could have school on the tenth.
I would double check the RSA, but if I wasn't mistaken, I thought that you could send your students to school if you at least taught them about Veterans Day, but I could be completely mistaken on that. We could double check the RSA, but it's more than an option.
Yeah, I'd just like clarification, since it is on the Saturday, if, if Friday is a required federal holiday, would we be off or not? Our post office is all closed on Friday, and Penn is closed on Friday, but would Veterans Day on the Saturday or not? That kind of determines whether we do or don't do something on Friday. As far as I'm concerned, if it's, you know, it's always been, Veterans Day is Veterans Day on the eleventh, and that's the day that you observe it on. And if that is the case, and there's no requirement to be off on Friday, then I'd say we should have school on Friday.
So move the half day to Friday.
No, leave the half day there, but then you have Thursday and Friday as four days to school.
Oh, I see, it's called.
Yeah, that's my point. If we check, if we double check the state law, I mean, I almost thought, you know, and I could be completely mistaken, it's completely off my rocker right now, but I thought that it wasn't required that we keep our kids home for Veterans Day.
Well, I guess we have a little work to do on that. We'll look, we'll look into that and see if it's, you know, if it's required to have the day off or not, or if we can pass students.
I, I feel like some parents look at a Veterans Day as a sacred day.
Yeah, and that's why I say the eleventh is the eleventh.
Right, I mean, you know, observing the public during the week, I think, some will reject, to explain kids at school.
My father was a veteran, and we always had the day off when he never did, and that was right in Marymount.
I, I agree with you, Jim, but it's just, it's an option to keep our attendance up, and it's not the actual day of Veterans Day. The celebrations will happen that Saturday, and everyone, you know, I assume will go to their local parades or whatever have you, support family members and see them. So I, I just think it's an option on the table, we're approving the calendar, I think we have right now, but we come back next meeting and say, you know, we can't have school, and we think it's appropriate, respectful enough, I think we should.
And, and Brody, you know, your, your point, Brody, is that, you know, maybe if we have school on Friday, that's a day to, you know, teach and, and talk about veterans and Veterans Day, and emphasize that day with the kids who are in school.
Whether that's required by the state or not, I think it's still a good idea to incorporate that.
Jim?
That would also mean that we do the end of school up one day, seventeen.
Yes.
Which would be a half day.
Which would be a half day, you mean?
Oh, that one's not going to be one of ten.
And that's a Monday, and a half day Monday, what would that be said, I don't think it ever, I have it wrong.
It'll snow at least on Monday.
It'll, it'll, it'll snow, Jim.
The question what I said originally was, I thought we could take that day off, move it to the end of winter break, to give back, only, to make it so it's only a half week, the first week of January, and the second. You had to move it to the second, so it wouldn't be less for the end of the year.
Okay, well, do we, do we want to table, we can table a vote on this until next month, get some more clarification.
Then I'll withdraw my motion, and you can withdraw your second.
All right, well, we'll table, table passing the calendar right now, we'll move it until next, next month's meeting. And we'll get some more clarification on this.
Just so you can look at that particular day.
Yes.
Brody, if you go down to the VUP, you would ask them what you think.
Okay, next, on superintendent's report, superintendent goals. So in your packet, I have proposed superintendent goals in the areas of listening and learning, visibility, competency-based learning, and safety and security. I've written these goals based on information that I've heard from principals, from community members, from teachers, and law enforcement. So this would require an action. Happy to answer any questions?
Brody, I was, I was wondering if under safety and security, we could explicitly include mental health issues too?
So I had a question or comment relative to that. Because we are trying to implement health tiers systems of support in our district, and that seems to be really pressing this year because our grant is running out. Could that be incorporated into one of these? And, and it certainly falls into safety and security because I read the report after you all day, it takes a, you know, a lot of different angles to support our students.
I think sometimes we forget safety is, I mean, it starts with mental health first, right? And to everyone's safety, typically it starts with having, you know, our students all taking care of their mental health. That's why I thought it might go there, but if the superintendent thinks it goes somewhere, you know, else, it might be better than, be more than helpful to that. I just think it should be included.
So it could be, um, so for safety and security, identify and resolve safety and security needs through board policy, relationships with local police and fire departments, and homeland security plans and regional contacts. So it could be adding in the relationships piece. Because then that would imply that I'm looking to identify the needs, not only through law enforcement, not only through homeland security, but also through connections and relationships with our mental health staff.
Could we say, like, through, in addition, like, after the, through, like, through the development or the implementation of MTSSB? As one of those items? Because that's all what we got that presentation. Do we, do we want to be that specific?
Yeah, I, I was like, for me, I, I don't know if we want to be that specific, because if that grant runs out, and that, like, I don't know. I'm not a big fan of all these ransom things, because they, educated is notorious for doing all of these things, and then they, they go away.
That's what I don't want to go away.
Well, welcome to education. So, I mean, just, I mean, you want to make it sustainable, and whether you want to call it something different, you know, I just, if you put that label on it, I just feel you're setting yourself up for failure. And.
I think it's limiting too. Well, MTSS is endorsed by every single major education and safety organization in the entire country. So it's not just like a bad, it's not just like, it's, it is what, so the school resource office or the law enforcement, the US Department of Education, this is not like a little thing, it's like really important, so I would.
I think we should consider, sorry.
However we want to name it.
Well, no, I think we should consider that this is our superintendent's goals, and what goals can she reasonably is saying? And if it's a broader one, then I think that's what we should go with, and she feels comfortable with the specific, you know, how the grant program works. But I think ultimately, we're on agreement, I, you know, based on the discussion, that mental health for our students should be included and incorporated in some way.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And the, you know, the. And the, you know, the general scope and sequence of this whole piece is about listening, learning, you know, visibility, understanding academics, safety and security, and then coming back to you and maybe the report. So as a result of all of this information gathering, coming back to you with a report in the form of a self-reflection on the progress on the goals prior to your evaluation. So certainly, mental health is going to be coming up in a piece of that. So just as a, as a, as a note. In the first goal, listening and learning, I can point to supportive environments. And perhaps that should be more specific as to what that exactly means. Collaborative teachers, supportive environments, family engagement, and ambitious instruction. So supportive environments includes most of what you saw in Tier One, Two, and Three. Very generally, social, emotional, special education, counseling. But it could be more specific.
Is there anything we could just add? Just in that list, just comma, mental health needs.
Absolutely.
I mean, I just, I just think it should just be explicit so then if, you know, when these wires, sort of YRBS results become public and as parents who have children are really trying to address these needs after COVID and all lockdowns and everything, I would like to be able to say that is a goal of our new and wonderful superintendent that she is currently handling. For them to know that that's something our district is addressing.
I do appreciate, I know I laugh, but I do appreciate adding this piece. So supportive environments, how about in particular, mental health needs, student mental health needs?
Whatever you feel.
How does that sound?
Under, sorry, are you on the safety and security?
No, I was up this time.
Listening and learning, oh.
Gaining a clear understanding of the district's current state of principal leadership, collaborative teachers, supportive environments, especially or specifically mental health needs, family engagement, and ambitious instruction. So that piece there, you know, has the deadline, it would be well before May 31st because we need to finish the, you know, finish the whole evaluation by then. So that's when there will be results and recommendations of those, of those areas.
That's what you feel.
Yeah, I do.
We've seen so far of the data.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I was wondering if we could get a presentation at some point, either in academic affairs or support about what our competency-based learning initiative is.
Yes.
You got a yes for the audience.
I had a view report on how you're supporting implementation.
Any other questions, Brody?
Yes. Is, would it be all right to add a goal to having a reasonable increase in standardized testing? As perhaps they added on a goal, a reasonable increase in standardized testing scores like the SATs, LSATs, and the standardized testing that takes place in the elementary school?
What I can say about that is that there's a lot that goes into that. And that would be a multi-year goal, you know? So I think looking at competency-based learning, that is the academic focus goal. And to have a goal to increase standardized test scores, I think that would be a multi-year goal. These goals are slated to end this spring. And to have standardized test scores, you know, have a goal for them to incrementally increase over a series of time with different interventions, that would take several years. So that could be something to look at in the future.
I'm sure that works reasonably.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have to say that I'm not quite as interested in including that as a particular goal. And the reason is that over the years, it seems as if so many of the standardized tests don't necessarily show adequately what a particular student is competent in. And, you know, I think that in many cases, if teachers are spending a lot of their efforts to try to teach to specific testing, I think we lose a lot of opportunity to make sure each child is getting what they need. And to me, a test is, is any kind of test, whether it's in, you know, your classrooms or the national standardized testing, that's just a photograph in time. And I, you know, I know there are always folks who are going to say, oh, you know, this state does so well and that state does so well. And if you really look closely, they, these various states, I think, I think the Houston Independent School District got in a big jam a few years ago because they were excluding certain students. And so to me, you know, if we keep our focus on, on improving mental health and competency-based learning, I think that it's one of those things that will naturally evolve so that our students will do better. But I, I don't particularly feel that we should have that as a concrete goal. And of course, we respectfully disagree on that, obviously.
We do.
And that's okay. I'm in favor of it in subsequent years, but as the first year, I think it's still important to do this, to do this work here.
Oh, I heard. Thank you. Could you refresh my memory? Is this going to be part of the formal evaluation program of the full board? And is the mechanism for this going to be that example system you'd sent around one or two ago? Does this all tie together with that? I don't know how this is measured.
Thank you for asking that question. So yes, it will be. So the evaluation of the superintendent, so these are the superintendent goals. Some of the goals that are, some of the topics that were brought up might be more appropriate for district-wide goals. But these as superintendent goals would be at the end of the superintendent evaluation. So in the format that I shared, the first eight, I believe, are the standards by which superintendents are evaluated in the state of New Hampshire, areas that we need to have competency in to be certified. So there's those first eight areas. And then after those eight areas, I'll add my goals. So I'll add these four goals and you will have the opportunity to rate and comment based on my progress. In addition to that, I'll provide you a self-reflection of, of the progress and any and all of the work in all of those areas prior to the evaluation. Because some of them you may not be privy to. And some, you know, you may just not have learned, you know, the depth of all the work that's been done in all those areas. So you'll have that and you'll have, you know, the presentations and you'll have any other data that you need.
Thank you for that, that's helpful. And this may be an obvious question. I'm assuming you're going to have a new list every year? Because I'm noticing one thing that's missing here is there's nothing about infrastructure involved. It's called infrastructure for the school system, that sort of thing. Maybe that's something that'll appear in the future?
It could, and it's certainly one of the standards. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
You had mentioned, you know, something like raising an academic achievement score or average score for the district is more of a district rule. And I'm wondering, at what point do you think we'll be able to begin that strategic planning process and goal setting as a district?
Okay, so in this, thank you for asking that, it's a very exciting part of the work, I think. So the whole first part, the Portrait of a Learner work, that is just getting started, partnering with Katie and Heather in that work in that we have a leadership team going to the Portrait of a Learner sessions along with many, and Jim Pittman is our board representative, going to all the Portrait of a Learner sessions this year. We're putting together a plan to solicit feedback from all stakeholder groups, parents, board, students, community members, to put that together. Once we have what that Portrait of a Learner looks like at the end of the school year, I believe that's our goal in a year or two. From there, we decide, okay, how are we delivering on that Portrait of a Learner? What else do we need to do? That is our outcome that we're looking for, the student going all the way pre-K through 12. Are there gaps, are there strengths? And it's from that information that we then make action steps and work forward for strategic planning. So that's, that's really the heart of that first goal, is the Portrait of a Learner work.
Okay, any other questions? Any comments? All right, so we've added, we've added that, I think we had a motion already from Brody on this?
No, but I'll make it. I'll make the motion.
All right, Brody made the motion there. Who's second, can I second this? Dr. Jim's second? Okay, so it's moved the second to approve the superintendent's goals as presented with the modifications added. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy? Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Board's eye as well. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that we take a five-minute break? I know our budget discussions can be.
It will take a few minutes, we'll take a five-minute break and we'll be back shortly. Okay, we're back. I want everybody to pay attention now, this is the budget presentation. Yes, take notes, this is going to affect you now. Thank you for being here and listening to us. Is Charlene sitting down there? Please, Miss. Oh, Dana, okay. Okay. So I'd like, I'd like to start with an overview of the ESSER funds, also known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. They are COVID-related emergency funds from the federal government to help reopen and keep schools open across the nation. The funds must be used for activities and projects that are related to COVID and acceptable under the grant guidelines. Priorities were established for use of these funds. In order, here are the priorities we set first. First, student safety and well-being. Next, addressing learning loss and improving student achievement. And third is looking at enhancing our HBA system for student health and safety and as an investment in our schools that will defray costs down the road. The funds were available in three phases. ESSER I, or the Corona, coronavirus aid relief and economic security act cares, was the first phase of the funding. These funds were to purchase personal protective equipment, Plexiglas, Chromebooks, software for remote instruction and meetings, cleaning supplies, tuition for remote learning programs, and nursing services. ESSER II, or the Corona response and relief supplemental appropriations act, CRRSA funds, have been devoted to increasing the academic achievements of our students. The administrators have been working to do this. Katie, our curriculum director, has explained this in the past. The funds and resources available through this grant will help the schools achieve this in a shorter time period, what would have taken many years to achieve. Included in this grant is work under the umbrella of the New Hampshire Learning Institute, including consultation and professional development for teachers. As a part of this, we have a two-year math position, we have two-year math positions in each of the schools and a curriculum project manager at high school, a social and emotional learning resources, additional reading materials, funds for more extensive summer programming, and for after-school tuition and transportation. ESSER III, or the American Rescue Plan, ARP, is the third phase in the largest amount of money. This is where the third priority of the school point comes into play. The ESSER III grant is the largest amount of grant money, $6,582,666, and must be expended by the end of 2024. The grant guidance expressly identifies heating, ventilation, and cooling systems as a supportive activity. Consideration of the putting the money into these systems to provide the public, to provide public input, you can also go to the GWRSA site. It is important for the public to know that the grants cannot be used to lower tax rate. The federal government requires that in order to receive these funds, we are not disproportionately reducing state and local per pupil costs in schools and the district is not disproportionately reducing the number of full-time staff per pupil in high-need classified schools. These grants are more complex than our typical grants and have a variety of requirements imposed by the federal government, including formulas to ensure we are following the guidelines. There is some flexibility during the grant period to modify the grant activities. For example, if an activity results in some leftover funds, they can be reallocated. However, any unspent funds must be returned to the federal government. Now, moving on to the budget. The budget preparation begins in October with staff members in each school providing the school principal with their budgetary needs. Each administrator submits a budget to the SAU office. The business administrator and superintendent of schools meets with each school leader to discuss their requests. If there is a large increase in an individual budget, unless there is a special circumstance or a very well justified rationale, the administrator is asked to review the budget and reduce it while keeping priorities intact. If any increase remains and does not have a strong justification, a second round of cuts may occur. Personal requests are made at the same time. Requests for positions may or may not proceed to the finance committee depending on the strength of the rationale outlining the need for the position. This year, we discussed reductions in positions and a few other options. Public meetings in November to discuss the budget this year were held on November 15th, 16th, and 17th. Following these meetings, additional cuts were made in order to lower the budget. After tonight, there will be two more opportunities to hear about the budget, at the January 9th board meeting when the budget is adopted, and at the deliberative session on February 4th at 10:00 a.m. Although total enrollment is for the most part stable, there are some changes in enrollment at some of the schools. Last year's total enrollment was 2,107. This year is 2,169. The high school enrollment is lower than it was last year. However, the incoming classes over the next two years will likely bring that number back up, possibly increased by 14 students. U-Dorum also had an increase of eight students. The largest decrease was at Carpenter School with 18 fewer students. The largest decrease was at Carpenter School with 18 fewer students. Schools are a labor-intensive organization, and wages make up approximately 75% of the budget. The wage line does not include the Governor-Wentworth Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. These will be presented in warrant articles and are addressed later in this presentation. The decrease you see in these line items, this is on the general fund, are the results of our administrators scouring through each school's expenses to cut back where they could. Items related to building and maintenance were also reviewed and cut back to offset the repairs and maintenance list that needs to be attended to this year, in addition to the capital improvement list. The work that our IT department did to run cable, bringing voiceover IP, is paying off in a significant reduction in our phone service bills. The tuition line represents about two-thirds of the increase in the general fund. This line is for special education students, who, for various reasons, are placed out of our, out of district, that may be forced to children place in a hall in another district, children who, when they moved into the district, were already in placement, or students we have, we have needed to place. This figure, this figure is a projection for students who are either already in placement or placement is being discussed. If the placements don't occur, this money is returned to taxpayers. Here, in the second half of the general supplies budget, we continue to see cuts in supplies, testing materials, books, and other printed media, new equipment, and new furniture, in order to balance out the increases in some of the other areas. The testing materials presented is a result of changing to the EXPAT testing. EXPAT allows the teachers to bill down to see which standards are not being met, and provide suggestions and resources, providing the students with additional help to meet those standards. The increase in the replacement of equipment line keeps our Chromebook replacement cycle on target, and also includes some teacher laptop replacements, as well as replacing some of our smart boards. We have been moving to Provenian boards, which are less expensive than the smart boards, and don't require additional document cameras and projectors. We continue to replace furniture, tables at the high school and at Osipheen, both have not been replaced for about 20 years. Moving on to the collective bargaining agreement. This past two years have been a particularly trying time for everyone. Our faculty has been doing an incredible job getting back, getting back to students' learning in person. We are short-staffed and have multiple opening, open teaching positions or support staff positions. The Consumer Price Index has increased, for New Hampshire, is approximately 6.9%. We appreciate the hard work of our faculty, and need to make our compensation more in line with the rising cost of learning. Year-one costs include a 3% increase to the salary schedule and added staff increases. Year-two is a 3% increase to the salary schedule and the staff. And year-three is another 3% increase, as well as the salary staff. Additional stipends have been included that are an integral part of our athletic program and club activities for our students. Each year, the board puts forth a building and maintenance warrant article for capital improvements. It is varied between $150,000 and $200,000. This year, the year, I'm sorry, the years when it has been $150,000, we invariably have projects that are not completed and need to be considered the following year. This is the case this year. This warrant article includes the funds for three compressor replacements at the high school, middle school, and technology center, carpet replacements at Osipheen in several classrooms, window replacements at Carpenter School, and sidewalk replacements at Osipheen and Effingham. Our quotes and estimates for all of the capital improvement needs comes to $243,455. This year, we're asking for the $150,000 level. Also, each year, for the past several years, we have presented a turf field capital reserve warrant article. Capital reserve was established to avoid the district having to, at the full expense of replacing the turf field all at once. The life expectancy of a turf field is 10 to 12 years, at a cost of approximately $750,000 to replace. Currently, we have approximately $597,000 in reserve. When this fiscal year is at an end, we hope to add $60,000 from this year's warrant article, for a total of $657,000. We have been able to extend the life of the turf to 15 years through meticulous care. With the continued support of the warrant article, we should have full cost of the replacement in 2025, a year after it will be needed. Over the past seven years, we have retired our bonds in Osipheen, Effingham, and U-Norum. Our principal or debt from the Kingswood Complex project continues to decrease. This year, this year's reduction is $92,236. The interest increases as our principal decreases, because we receive less state building aid, with a reduction in our principal. The total reduction in the debt service is $6,495,000, 0.18%. The default budget, RSA 40:13, the Official Ballot Law, also known as SB2, determines what is to be included as part of the default budget. A default budget is the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized a previous year, reduced or increased by obligations mandated by law or previously incurred, such as debt service and contracts. One-time expenditures are not included in the default budget. The purpose of presenting a default budget is to give the voters an understanding of what a budget would look like, should the proposed operating budget be voted down. The default budget is $418,603 lower than the proposed budget. Important dates to remember. January 9th is the final adoption of the budget, final adoption budget here. January 10th is the last date for collective bargaining. January 10th is also the last date for petition warrant articles. January 30th, the last date post-budget with deficit and default budget. January 18th to the 27th is filing for district officers, and February 4th at 10:00 a.m. is the deliberative session. If you have any questions, we can... See, no, thank you for your, for your time. We'll move on to these, yes?
I just have one question. What is the percentage increase of the default budget over the previous budget?
The default budget is less, so the...
No, no, but the project we're proposing, do you have that percentage increase over the first budget? What would the default budget, the default increase percentage be? Do we have that?
If, okay, so if you look at the column, are you looking at that sheet? If you look at the spreadsheet that says default budget, in the first column says Budget 2023, the grant total was $58,400,000, and the default budget is $59,304,374. I don't know, I don't have, I haven't calculated that out, but that is, that is one and a half, one, one million, three hundred, three hundred thousand more.
So that would be over 1.2%?
Yeah, it's less than the 2.86, because that's what we're looking at, in the regular budget, 1.6 versus 1.30.
So you're, you're asking from the 2023 budget to the default budget?
Yeah, yeah, so we, I don't know if I'm looking where you're looking at.
The budget for 2023 was $58,4,415, is that what you're looking?
Are you? What page are you looking at, John?
I don't have the start to debt, start of the top and his default budget.
It's the next to last page. You know that we use words of importance, these are the numbers of the section before that.
Okay, so the $58,415 is what?
So the $58,000 to the 59,3, is about 1.1%, 1.2%?
Is, is the, so is the $58,000 in 2023 budget?
Yes.
Oh, okay, those columns aren't there?
Yeah, yeah, if you shift, shift the columns over.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
And so we, what is the total?
So the total, the total proposed budget is $59,722,977, and the default is a $59,304. So the difference is, is 419, so if the proposed budget is voted down, and we were in the default budget, we have to cut in on the $418,000 from the current budget.
Right. What is the overall percentage increase of, from, from 2023 to the 2020?
That was the 2.8, oh, that's right, I think you were in the room at that time when we were discussing the budget before, 2.8, 2.8, 2.86%.
That's the sheet, Stephanie, that's the sheet that I handed out to you? Okay, if you, yep, that's it right there.
Yeah, right, 2.86%.
Okay.
Now, that does not include the proposed teacher's contract.
I see.
And that, and that brings the total increase to 4.15, I think it was.
You know, 4.18?
4.18% with the teacher's contract if approved.
4.18% with the teacher's contract is approved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
And for the public.
Okay. Okay, moving on then, to the chairman's report, just one, one note of expression of sympathy we sent to Norm Adjutant, Carpenter School, the student who passed into his father. We sent that out. And we'll move right on to committee reports, academic affairs, Charlene.
Just for the, for the cap, you still take them, so?
You can't remember. Oh, what? Hi.
Okay, I'd like to draw your attention to, first of all, it says here, the procedures and meeting schedule, we reviewed that, and I want to make sure that my committee members know that we will be meeting on the 19th of December at 4:30 at the SAU, because we are going to get through our examination of the policies that we did not get to at our previous meeting on November the 16th. So tonight, we have recommended for adoption first read, or before I forget, would, would my colleagues on the board be so kind as to submit your suggested edits to Heather this evening, so that she can, she and Kathy can work together on incorporating any edits you have noticed you'd like to be considered, and we'll take a look at those at our committee meeting. So tonight, we have recommended for adoption first read, BBBF, about student board members, EBDD, emergency school and district closings, IHVAB, special education evaluations, INBA, distance education, and for adoption, the last, last one is JH, student attendance, absences, and truancy. And I, which, the board like to approve those as a block for first read? Oh, wait, we don't have to approve them, that's right, never mind, okay, sorry. First read, yes. Yes, okay. And then, we have a few that are recommended for revision, and again, reaffirmation first read, and as Stephanie and Tom pointed out, we did remove, I scribbled it out, AD, because that's going to be looked at further at our next meeting. So we have BBB, school board elections, EBDD, indoor air quality, and GBGA, staff health, and recommend for withdrawal first read, EVCE, delayed openings slash emergency closings, IHVAR, home education instruction, IHVGR, participation in public school activities by home-educated and non-public school pupils, JHB, student absences and truancy, and JHBR, student absences and truancy, and those, those are the regulations. So these are all recommended for first read tonight, and again, since you've all had a chance to review the policies prior to our meeting, I would encourage you to please, if you have any suggested edits, to make sure you get those to Heather tonight. And that's all I got. Stephanie or Tom, do you want to add anything?
For first read?
Yeah, and, yeah, and first read, or we can just send in any concerns to Heather if you...
Oh, we're not discussing anything? We're just writing down our...
Yeah, this is for first read, so any, any changes you want to make, and then they can get discussed on second read and approval, yes.
These are the ones that we went through at our November 19th meeting, and we voted to bring these particular ones forward for first read, and per our, our new procedures, we reviewed all of those prior to our meeting, and then the school board has renewed the policies prior to the board meeting in preparation for the first read, so that's why I'm asking everyone with any suggested edits to hand those to Heather tonight.
Can I clarify, so this is a little bit of what we've done in the past, so when do we discuss the policies of the board? I'm sorry, when do we discuss policies of the board now?
You, you basically discuss policies in your, in the academic affairs, you bring them to the board for first read, if there's any other changes, and then the board reviews those for any definite changes, and votes out to approve at the second, second board meeting. Yeah, right. Second read is the approval.
That's how we've always done it.
Yeah, that, so that part hasn't changed, your process of meeting earlier to prepare this information to get to the board prior to our meeting is, is the change. But the, the process of first read, making modifications, and second read for approval hasn't changed.
So we, I've made some suggestions in our last meeting, and they're not changed right now, so I don't know if there's, if I should say something?
No, just reemphasize those, send those again to Heather, and make sure that they're included before the next, the second read.
Stephanie, what, what specific things, which policies are you talking about? Because we all, you know, went through them as a committee, and made some suggestive changes, and agreed that with those suggested changes, we were going to bring them forward for first read tonight. So if you see something, I mean, I don't remember at our meeting...
So the, the two things that I saw that we discussed at the meeting that aren't on this version yet are in policy JH, as being excusable absences, college visits, and visits to an incarcerated caregiver, that's explicitly excused absences, and then also, we had talked about not requiring the parents provide a written notice to have the means to absence, that a phone call would suffice from a parent. So those things weren't changed that we discussed at our committee meeting.
Okay, we can repeat this. Should I just say it again?
Well, send them, send, send them what your one change to Heather, to be included in the final draft. Okay, is that your role, Charlene?
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Mr. Pittman, you're up, anything? Mr. Pittman, you're up, anything?
Not much. How's that? Write that down. Yeah, building and maintenance has not been as a group since our last meeting. The only thing I will mention is that the MOU process that we embarked on with Pop Whalen for our participation in the locker room, we returned to them and edited MOU with an expectation of receiving a response from them by November first. November has come and gone, and we still have not heard anything. So that's an outstanding item. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, the next, we have finance. I think you just heard the budget presentation. And we'll have that finalized for the January meeting and have the official PowerPoint presentation up on the screen for anybody that wants to look at it. And we'll move on from there. And human resources, I have nothing else for tonight. So we don't have public input here, so is there any public input? At least, there's no public here, I guess, in the hospital, that's okay. All right, advanced planning, please look at us down below at the advanced planning because there's so much stuff coming on. The seventh and the eighth, we have middle school concerts, we have Crystal Lake concert, and then the twelfth is New Durham. Fourteenth and fifteenth, fourteenth is Tufton Borough and...
Yeah, Tufton Borough is, no, you're right, it is the fourteenth, sorry.
Okay.
So yours is the fourteenth?
Ours is the twelfth, no. I was thinking of the spring concert, the spring concert we do with that, but this one's separate.
Okay, so this is separate. So New Durham is on the twelfth, Tufton Borough is on the fourteenth, Effingham is also on the fourteenth, Carpenter's is on the fifteenth, and the Osipheen is on the fifteenth. And Christmas recess is the twentieth, sixth to the thirtieth. And our next school board meeting is on the ninth of January at seven p.m., and that will be in the lecture hall, which we normally use for a presentation of the final budget before adoption. Any closing comments by board members? First of all, I'd just like to say, kids were terrific. I mean, they did such a great job tonight, they really did. It's so much fun to see the excitement. I was watching a couple of them, were just so excited to be there, jumping around and singing. It was just a lot of fun, it was just a lot of fun. Anyone else have any comments?
I'd say I liked the meeting with New Durham here in this time of year. Just coming out of the middle, coming out of the crossroad, let's go back over to Middleton. The road was passably perfect. United States Road, that road, in the springtime, it is not passable.
I don't think we've set up, I don't think we've set up the school board schedule for next year, so...
Yeah, that's broken, that number was broken in the summer.
Spamalot was amazing.
Oh, Spamalot was terrific.
It was phenomenal, it laughed their tails off.
It was so, it was so much fun. They did such a great job, you know, opening night, you know, you know, not sure if we can have jitters or not, I'll tell you, the kids did such a fantastic job. It was just immaculate.
Okay, while patiently waiting to get the talking stick. A couple of other board members expressed their great joy at the production of Spamalot, and I have to say that it was a hoot and a half. I, everything from, you know, from the lighting, the set, the actors, of course, the music. I am incredibly proud of our theater program. Everyone involved, the volunteers, you know, the people who make the costumes. It was phenomenal, and very polished, and we saw it opening night. And I thought it was just absolutely glitch-free, it was very impressive. I also wanted to give a shout out to our Ag Science students who created a stunning wreath for me that I picked up today. And their wreaths are incredibly reasonable. They're lush, they're beautiful, twenty dollars plain, twenty-five dollars decorated. You won't find anything better in this whole area. And last, well, and obviously, I'm thrilled to be back at New Durham and looking forward to the board crawling on the climbing wall.
Next year, there we go.
And last but not least, I would also like to give a shout out to Heather and to our illustrious superintendent and Kathy, as well as to the New Hampshire School Board Association attorneys because they all spend an incredible amount of time going through the, you know, the new RSAs and making sure that the policies that we need to have in place, they, you know, they provide us some very thorough material to work with. And I think that their efforts need to be recognized. And thank you, ladies, for the work you do as well.
By the way, happy holidays, everybody.
Oh, thank you.
And that's it. We last year, we had the last one, so...
All right, happy holidays to everyone. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Because we're not going into non-public events.
Really? So moved. Merry Christmas, Doc.
All right. All right, we're going to give...
No, I didn't.
You did.
My Christmas here.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourned? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Hallelujah.
Charlene?
Aye.
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.